Councilman Sedgley.
Here.
Councilman Volmend.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Here.
President.
Do you have anyone, any member of the public who wishes to address city council? See, now I'll close that portion.
The first item that I'm going to read is coming back. It was previously given to you. It was a letter dated June 13, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services requesting permission for the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with UNCF for the purpose of providing scholarships for students from the City of Elizabeth attending any accredited four-year institution.
We've had the Law Department look at it, and they recommend that we...
That we what?
Put it on.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have a question on that one.
Yes.
Is that's the one that the May gives out on a yearly basis for a special community and everything else?
See, United Negro College Fund.
Right. And where the funding are coming from?
I believe it comes from private donations.
Private donations?
We don't, we don't, we don't fund it.
Oh, okay.
We just coordinate, we receive the applications, and then decide who gets them. That's my understanding. Am I right, Tony?
No, because I, I meant to call you. I did read it, but I still have a question that I don't have before me, so I will stop by doing the reading. Thank you.
I mean, if anybody has anyone that you would be interested in applying for a scholarship, I think we can go through either Tony or the Director of the Health Department, she could get you to touch on others.
It's a good thing to do, but...
And anyone at home who is interested in applying for a United Negro College Fund scholarship, they should contact Director Christian McCullough in the Health Department. Got it?
Letter dated July 16, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to firefighter one, Sparta, New Jersey, for the purchase of personal protection items and equipment for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, in the amount not to exceed $60,000. Letter dated July 21, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Bayer Ford, Morristown, New Jersey, for the purchase of one 2015 Ford Explorer and one 2015 Ford Transit van, at a total cost of $63,870.
Question?
I didn't get a chance. Mr. President, are they replacing?
Police Department.
Police, okay. Break up.
Letter dated July 28, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Malaford Lincoln Mercury, North Brunswick, New Jersey, for OEM vehicle parts and repairs for various departments, for the period July 7, 2014 through April 1, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $50,000 under the Somerset County Cooperative Purchasing Contract.
I just have one item. Tony, can you find out if there is, when is the next time we're going to be buying some trucks for the DPW? We went through a whole...
What type of trucks?
Garbage trucks. My understanding is our garbage trucks are pretty old. We've probably used two new ones, so, the refurbished ones, I guess, and a payloader.
And a payloader?
I think those, our garbage trucks and our payloads are pretty old. If we could find out a list of the stock in those two types of trucks, what the ages are, and if the Director, I know we're doing this thing with the cooperative, maybe it's an opportunity now to take advantage of low interest.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Letter dated July 28, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Ditchman, Flemington Ford, Flemington, New Jersey, for the purchase of OEM parts and repairs for various departments, for the period July 7, 2014 through April 1, 2016, under the Somerset County Cooperative Purchasing Contract.
Any questions?
Letter dated July 28, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Thompson Reuters, a division of West Publishing Corp., Eagan, Minnesota, for the purchase of web-based data access services for the Law Department and Municipal Court Division, for a period of time from July 1, 2014 to December 30, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $25,000.
It's, it's the books and the online legal research.
Letter dated July 31, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Royal Printing Service, West New York, New Jersey, to purchase election ballots in the amount of $38,215. Well, the county votes out and bids for it, but then each municipality is responsible for their share. Letter dated July 31, 2014, from Business Administrator requesting authorization for the issuance of insurance with Evanston Insurance Company, Deerfield, Illinois, through Agent of Record, Amstat Insurance Agency, covering city nurses for the period August 3, 2014 to August 3, 2015, at an annual premium of $16,479. Letter dated July 31, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to W.B. Mason Companies, Secaucus, New Jersey, and Paper Mart, East Hanover, New Jersey, for the purchasing of copy paper for all departments and divisions, under the Morris County Cooperative Purchasing Contract, for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $40,000. Letter dated July 31, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Rico America Corp., West Paulville, New Jersey, for photocopiers cost per copy leasing for the payment of new or replacement leases and maintenance of own photocopiers for the period July 1, 2014 through March 31, 2015, in a total amount not to exceed $85,000. Letter dated July 31, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Independence Constructors, Bridgewater, New Jersey, for cleaning inspections and monitoring of oil-water separators above and underground tanks at various locations, and New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection compliance, for the period July 1, 2014 through November 30, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $75,000. Letter dated July 31, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Modern Office Systems, LLC, New York, New York, for the purchase of evidence lockers for the Police Department property room in the amount of $10,405.66. Letter dated August 1, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Charles S. Winter, Inc., doing business as Winter Ford, Cherry Hill, New Jersey, for the purchase of one 2014 Ford F-150 at a cost of $30,747, one 2015 Ford F-450 with a landscape body at a cost of $69,325, one 2015 Ford F-450 standard service body at a cost of $56,540, and one 2015 Ford F-350 at a cost of $50,306 for the Department of Recreation, at a total cost of $206,918.
Councilman Volmend, you got a question?
No, I lost him, okay. I worked with him with the, on this, so I'm aware of that.
Are we replacing four trucks?
Yeah, replacing, yeah. You see the second little cloud up there?
Okay, so are we getting any money for the other ones, or...
No, that I don't know. That is, I didn't question about that.
Find out if we get any trading value?
Yeah, I do know that we're replacing that. And Paul, I hate to say Paul, but the Director of the Recreation, he doesn't alter a lot of equipment.
No, 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 he does do it. I just wanted to find out if we get any money.
He uses his equipment run down to where there's nothing. So it's well worth the need.
I agree.
Mr. President, can we have a list of all the trucks and all the equipment that we have under each department and the age or reach equipment that we have?
We did that a few years ago.
That was a few years ago, and the request was not...
Equipment, vehicles...
Right. I know we did it maybe three, four years ago, and we worked on the budget, but you...
Not, not the small little weed box, we're talking about big duty here.
Right. Can we get that list?
Sure.
Yeah, we have a fix, yes.
You know, because then every year we keep calling one. If you have to do, we do by department, and you're renovating, you know.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure the list is updated, because sometimes it's getting...
I mean, I don't expect it tomorrow. It's a long hurdle by September when we start working again. Up until tonight, next Tuesday, on vacation.
Years ago, Councilman, it was hard to keep track of it, but now everything's computerized. When you buy the truck coming, it's much easier to do.
Any more questions?
That's it, Mr. President.
Yeah, he's going to get it for everybody, right, Tony?
Yeah.
Letter dated August 1, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., Appleton, Wisconsin, for the purchase of one FY14 retractoring and refurbishing of a tractor-drawn aerial ladder truck for the fire department in the amount of $565,460. Letter dated August 1, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Mar Toronto Recreation Company, Spring Lake, New Jersey, for playground and park equipment for the recreation department, for the period July 1, 2014 to May 14, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Got any idea where this equipment is going?
We'll find out. Well, if you look up the first, if you see the paragraph, you kind of see, well, you don't say what playground, but instead, I guess in general, all playground. But I know some parts are going to be a spray park, I know that, because you list it. And, you know, I think the rest of it, like, general throughout the whole city.
Could we just find out, Tony, which, what equipment is going where? I mean, I know we have like 10, 15 playgrounds in the city.
Yeah, but I think that's where they're going, but he might, might know where he is exactly.
Recognize Councilwoman Patricia Burgis and Dusty Councilwoman Doris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi.
We're on a letter from Business Administrator, Bridget Allen, dated August 1, aluminum side blanks.
Letter dated August 1, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Garden State Highway Products, Vinyl, New Jersey, for aluminum side blanks for the Public Works Department, for the period July 1, 2014 through July 1, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Mr. President, being that we're spending $100,000, maybe even more, whatever, can we get the Public Works to redo all those sign that says street cleaning such-and-such a day, because a lot of them you could barely see, they're so faded out? That's what they're using those signs for?
That's what they're supposed to be using for.
All right, because there's so many of them, that it's really, you know, it's like the city's been 300, no, 350, or 650 years. So can we stop updating?
Mr. Zengaro, can you do a project, or Director of Public Works, and how this sign grew out?
Yeah.
They're doing a few blocks every week.
I mean, I could tell you right in your street where you are, the sign that you could barely read, for street cleaning.
Could you provide a list?
But you know what ends up happening?
But he has to do it himself, with the Councilman.
Councilman's right, because what happens is, if you get a street cleaning ticket, you go in front of a judge, and say, "Look, I just moved in the area, and I couldn't see the time," it'll get dismissed. So we lose revenue.
Letter dated August 1, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Bayway Lumber, Linden, New Jersey, for the purchase of lumber and associated materials for various departments, under the Morris County Cooperative Purchasing Contract, for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Questions?
Letter dated August 1, 2014, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Feldman Lumber Company, Brooklyn, New York, for the purchase of lumber and associated materials for various departments, under the Morris County Cooperative Purchasing Contract, for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $75,000. Letter dated July 14, 2014, from Second Assistant City Attorney, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute a right-of-way agreement with TW Telecom of New Jersey LP, for a period of 15 years.
Mr. President?
Okay, Councilman.
The thing that I brought up a couple of years ago was whether or not these agreements were exclusive or non-exclusive. I'm glad to see that it's not exclusive, so that the event that another company, either statewide or county-wide and locally, gets approved for a right-of-way, there won't be conflict. Is that correct, Tom?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thanks.
I'm fine, Mr. President. For the playground equipment, do we know where that's going?
We asked that question.
Oh, okay, so we don't... We don't know where it's going?
No, we're going to be checking what the...
Okay.
Tony's going to find out?
Yes.
Letter dated July... Letter dated July 22, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to refund credit of veteran deduction for the property located at 912 South Street and 831 Grove Street, for the tax year 2014, in the amount of $500. Letter dated July 23, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to said disallow senior citizen deductions as per the delineated list, for the tax year 2013, in the amount of $500. Mr. President, if I could, on July 14, this says revised. What's been revised? The agreement?
The original, I think, couldn't even make it up here, so if it was revised, I think that's internal.
I do not know, but I can, I can find out what's the original.
I don't know, Mr. President, is it going to be revised?
Where the letter? There were a couple letters.
Just a couple of letters?
I don't know, I didn't send it. Yes, your lord.
Letter dated July 23, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to cancel the said disallow senior citizen deduction as per the delineated list for the tax year 2013, in the amount of $500. Letter dated July 23, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer requesting authorization for the tax collector to cancel the said disallow senior citizen deductions as per the delineated list for the tax year 2013, in the amount of $750. Letter dated August 5, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer requesting of your honorable body approval of the state fiscal year corrective action plan accommodated with the 2013 state fiscal year order to court.
Is this what we sent?
Well, yeah.
But he signed last night.
General comments and recommendations.
He signed last night?
What do you mean?
The last...
Letter dated August 5, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a bond order authorizing cost of construction of the Elizabeth River Trail Phase IV, which includes the area along the Elizabeth River from South Lord Street to West Grand Street, in the amount of $1,700,000, with a down payment of $85,000. Letter dated August 5, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body authorize an application to the local finance board for participating in the New Jersey Environmental Trust financing program to finance the city's capital assessment in respect of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, in the amount of 5.4 million.
That's what we owe them? Tony?
We owe them the next letter. Did you just read the resolution, right?
The resolution.
Local Finance Board. And the next letter indicates the amount of the bond ordinance that we only put as 5.4 million this time. Over the next 10 years, including the 5.4 million, we'll have debt due to the joint meeting of 2.5 million. And that's right into the sewer utility.
Are we supposed to bring them there, or are they supposed to cover it or something?
No, not these... We're supposed to bring a PSE to it, which I don't know. Can we find out what this money's going?
Yeah, we have a schematic, I can send that to you.
What are they going to do? They're going to do some infrastructure improvement?
Yeah.
Yes?
The whole, the infrastructure, the equipment, the whole process of it. This is schematic, it gives you the, what each town owns, the 11 owners, plus the City of Elizabeth, and a different type of construction project.
Yeah, I remember some time ago, I think they were supposed to come in, but I don't think that ever happened. I think Warren did have an estimate of a total of like 60 million in improvements, and our share was 25?
Yeah, well, right here, it's 25 million, our share, so we're about one-third, a little more than one-third, it's about $75 million over the next 10 years.
This is where the biggest customer is.
I think we had long discussions about this. Either we're going to try to relook at the whole litigation process, or do something, if I'm, if my mind is not failing.
I think what you're referring to is a, the city has sued this joint meeting to recover some...
In time, you can answer that.
Yeah, so we're, we're currently in litigation for them to recover costs spent on the Pse River case. That may be what you're thinking of.
I mean, that could be hard, but I thought we were going to try to readdress this whole issue, maybe try to get a member from the City of Elizabeth to be part of, like a non-voting...
We don't have a representative there, right?
No. Like a non-voting member, you know, even though it was, there was a major discussion about a joint meeting, about even moving something forward, or trying to advocate to get a seat, even though it's, it's non-voting, yeah. I mean, we were just...
This was a year or two ago, we had a major discussion about this, and the fact is that decades ago, the City of Elizabeth decided to be a customer, not an owner.
100.
And that's inequities in terms of our relationship with the joint meeting as a customer, and we felt that we wanted to have an opportunity to ask the administration to go back and negotiate with them, and see if there's a way to put the city's position on better foot vis-à-vis the joint meeting.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Yeah, Councilman King is absolutely right, and from what I recall, as a result of that, the proposition that was made is that if we wanted to become a member, we had to pay almost from like the time that they started, so that this way we could become a member, and it was a ridiculous amount of money, in order for us to be able to join, and it just wasn't feasible. They wanted to charge us, like if we had started when...
$380 million.
Yeah, it was something like that.
Quick point. Well, we probably paid that over the last 100 years.
That being the case, how many other customers are there with the joint meeting as opposed to members?
Well, there were 11 members, city members, we're the largest customer, about 35 percent. They have other industrial customers.
How many?
Well, the 11 customers that they have.
No, no, how many are, 11 customers?
Yeah, 11 owners.
11 owners. And how many customers? Municipal customers? One? Or a couple, maybe? But the point is that we don't know whether we're being treated fairly or not, because our relationship with them is not as an owner.
Well, that's why I asked, what does this 25 million get us? Is there a rush on this?
Um, yes, yes, there's a rush, we have to go to the local finance board with this application, along with the other 11 municipalities, so...
Tony, this is what I'm asking you to do, you need to bring back to us before next to, for the general meeting, basically a detail of what we're getting for 25 million.
Yeah, I have a schematic.
Yeah, we don't have...
I'm elated.
Okay, please do that. I'd like to know what we're getting for 25 million. I mean, if they're going to put one pipe in one road, then...
And if they're going to take them on, using to fix other municipal things, then we need to be informed.
That's my point, I mean, I, I think if we're going to pay 25 million, we should get 25 million worth of improvement.
Well, it's improvement to the joint meeting system, of which we have to pay almost one-third. I mean, that's basically what it is, so...
Does that mean that they're going to process our floodwater a little quicker? I mean, I'd like to know what this improvement's going to do for us.
Hopefully more efficiently, and...
We need to know, we need to know this.
All right, I'll get you this schematic, and maybe we can get some words from the joint meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to know what, what we're paying 25 million for. We don't sit at the table, so we don't know what they're doing with their money. It's a $60 million improvement upgrade, but we don't know what it is. You know, we get bits and pieces and say, "Give us 25 million," and we have no idea what it's going for.
We need to know how much of that is going to be in the City of Elizabeth, all of that question.
So can we get some details from these guys?
Yeah.
We got two weeks. Russ, we're going to have to hold this thing out.
Then would it be too much to have one of the representatives come here, one of the meetings, to really speak with all of us?
If that's, that Councilman Sedgley makes a good point. They want to come to our council meeting, our next general council meeting, we'll meet a half an hour before the general meeting, and let them explain to us what we're getting for the 25 million, we'll be more than happy to receive.
Just in case there's other questions that come up.
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, many. Everybody, I think, they received the last water and sewer bill. With my understanding, that when we watered for the new rate and new price, or to disperse the $5 million, $2 million a year, or whatever, that was a bill, was supposed to not to be an increase. Okay? Why do we get an increase?
This is capital.
The one that we just got on this bill, well, I got 20 metric cubic extra above my bill. And I tried to call somebody that's in charge of the water company, what do they call him? Dee Gillespie? Does he work for the water company?
He does.
I left him two messages, and I returned the call, now what are we doing? Mr. President, can you get in touch with him, and sort that...
Can we have Mr. Gillespie return to Councilman Maza's call, please?
I mean, you know, we have serious questions, I mean, it's not only me, this is...
He's supposed to be our government liaison guy.
Absolutely, and he's on a payroll, so, you know, when a council call, no matter whether it's the sixth or the first, you have to reply back. 24 hours, 48 hours, okay.
But there's a difference between a person and six will count. You have some here.
Moving on.
All right, I'm going to read this one. Letter dated August 5. You don't want me to read that?
No, this is the same thing. This is both part of the resolution and the ordinance are the same thing.
Yeah, they're related.
Letter dated August 5, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer requesting a state fiscal year 2015 dedication by writer to the municipal budget for donations, acceptance of requests and gifts from the Adalana Corporation for the annual bookbag and supplies giveaway. Letter dated August 5, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer advising that temporary emergency appropriations for the 2015 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary. Letter dated August 5, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer advising that transfers for the 2014 state fiscal year municipal and sewer utility budgets may be necessary. Letter dated August 5, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing a review of the accuracy of statements made in official statements for bond and note issues over the last five years concerning the city's compliance with its prior undertakings to provide secondary market disclosure of annual financial information and notices of certain events and participation by the city in the Securities and Exchange Commission's Municipalities Continuing Disclosure Cooperation Initiative, if the disclosure review finds possible material misstatements concerning secondary market disclosure compliance.
What is this, Tony?
The FCC is requesting continuing disclosure information of the underwriters, bond attorneys, and municipalities. What's happened, there's been continual disclosure requirement for the last 10, 12 years now. We filed all the appropriate reports manually for 2008. In 2009, they switched over to a computer system, they call MA, and we've filed what we thought all the necessary reports were. Every time you have a bond offering to your financing... Every time you have a bond offering your financing, you create an official statement, and there's a statement in there about the continual disclosure rule, report any material happening within the city, et cetera. Now, unbeknownst to the city, to us, that not only requires the city reporting, but we have to report on also the deficiency agreements that we've had with the parking authority, E P C, Unicanny Improving Authority, and that type of thing. So we not only have to report our own, under our own Q C number for the bonds that we, that are issued, okay, but we have to report for any of their happenings. And they just stretched it so much where even the bond insurers who went belly up around two thousand eight, two thousand nine, okay, that insured our own bonds, we had to report that incident on the computer, on the M system, okay? Now, countrywide, many municipalities haven't filed anything in the last twelve years. We've done, you know, a pretty good job, but there's still some gaps, and what this happens by July, well, right now it's December first, the S E C is giving the underwriters and municipalities a chance to disclose any misstatements or, let's see, disclosure reviews that were lacking and that type of thing. So if we disclose everything by December first, they're gonna give the municipalities a break. We're in pretty good shape.
Who in the administration is in charge of this?
Well, yeah.
Comes out of your office.
Yeah, yeah, finance, yeah. And what's, what's happening, our bond attorneys involved, that we have our underwriters involved, we'll probably look for an outside contractor just to ensure that we're...
You haven't missed any?
We haven't missed anything, and that we won't miss anything in the future. Okay? And the rules have just become, you know, onerous as to what has to be reported, that type of thing. But compared to other municipalities in good shape, as we've reported, you know, over the last twelve years, we have, we have most of our stuff on that system.
It's in your hands, literally.
Uh, yes, literally, and it'll, it'll work out, I mean, probably.
Letter dated August fifth, two thousand fourteen, from Chief Financial Officer advising that in compliance with the state fiscal year two thousand fourteen appropriations act requires your honorable body to approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits.
This is still from that pool of money that we...
Uh, yeah, yeah.
All these guys?
Yeah, a million dollars, this, this pays a couple of...
Letter dated July eleventh, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply acceptance sign all documents pertaining to the continuation of the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen cohort grant funding from the City of Newark Department of Administration, Bureau of Research and Program Development.
President, this is for Elizabeth residents? I don't know, I didn't know, so that's why. But if the money somehow gets funneled through, no...
There's more than...
There was the president's involvement.
But is it only Elizabeth residents?
No, it could live in various areas.
Yeah? Can we find out, break down how many people serve?
Well, we have about a hundred clients, and it's...
I think it's confidential. It's confidential.
Yeah, pretty confidential.
The number of people served and the location of what areas were being served.
I think about a hundred here.
Um, yeah, so a hundred clients, I'm not sure.
Just find out the percentage from Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Got a living there.
We don't need to know names, just...
Yeah, we don't need none of that.
They won't pay.
I was gonna say, won't take.
Yeah, they won't...
No, no, yeah. They won't take.
No. Okay.
Okay. Letter dated July fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting permission for the proper city officials to execute an agreement with the Gateway family, Y M C A, Elizabeth, to accept up to fifty children from the city's summer camp program to offer academic and recreational activities for the period of July ninth, two thousand fourteen, through August fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, at a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Maybe my math is wrong.
No, you're, you're a hundred.
Stop pressing it up.
No, excuse me. Maybe my math is wrong. It says, um, okay, the city will pay the Y M C A an additional compensation of eighty-three thousand thirty percent per camper, for three campers for six weeks. I don't know, did that come up to twenty-five thousand dollars?
Six times eighty-three is five hundred. I'm assuming it's eighty-three dollars a week.
I, I get, it's short six hundred and sixty dollars, if you do the math.
No, no, it's, um... There's just some pennies off.
It's four ninety-nine, four ninety-eight.
Right, it's some pennies off.
Oh, four ninety-nine? Okay, I'm sorry.
I have four eighty-nine.
Okay.
It's five hundred.
Yes, five hundred, okay. Thank you.
It's for six weeks. Eighty-three dollars a week is not a bad...
That's pretty good.
Very good.
Excellent.
Letter dated July thirty, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting authorization to disburse thirty-three thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars fifty cents to the Elizabeth Board of Education for the use of custodial security and bus services for the SOAR after-school program for the period October seventh, two thousand thirteen, to June nineteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Thomas?
Letter dated July thirty, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting authorization to disburse thirty-five thousand forty dollars to the Elizabeth Board of Education for the use of custodial security and bus services for the SOAR summer program for the period July seventh, two thousand fourteen, to August fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. Letter dated July twenty-three, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents...
Mr. President, why, why is it the same amount? Why does it cost, it costs more in the summer, because it's only about six weeks in the summer, from July seventh to the fifteenth? It's thirty-five thousand, and then you have from October seventh to June nineteenth, thirty-three thousand. Seven hundred sixty. So you have July seventh, you have the fifteenth, and thirty-five thousand.
I believe this is just the portion that's due, no? The grand totals are different.
No, I'm talking about the, the cost for the, um...
Right, if you look at the grand totals at the back, the summer program's only a hundred thousand, and the other programs, a hundred twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand.
This is just, this is just the quarterly payment.
Which is the quarterly payment?
This last payment.
How many of you just support your payment?
No, this is the payment for custodial, security, and miscellaneous, that's the bottom stuff. Everything but the facility. See, the first, the first one is for thirty days, the second one is for a hundred and fifty-nine days.
Thirty million.
Good question. Can we find out the answer to that? Why are we paying for thirty days, a certain amount of money that we're paying for a hundred and fifty-nine days?
Bus trips.
See that?
Yeah, bus trips, right here. Two bus daily, two for trips.
On the bottom, that's the extra nineteen thousand. July seventh.
Two bus trips, that's the seven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
I remember one above it, two bus daily, which is not even, it's not in the...
Which is nineteen thousand in bus trips. On the bus side. Thank you, thank you.
Letter dated July twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide an owner-occupied basic program deferred payment loan with property located at seven four six Jackson Avenue in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. Letter dated July twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to postpone the city's mortgage rental housing program on the property located at four sixty-four seventy-four Spring Street in the amount of, what is it, five hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred ten dollars.
Councilman, questions?
Letter dated August fourth, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body consider the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the city to collect all money the city disperses to relocate the displaced tenants of illegal occupancies.
We never had one of these?
Oh, we had this one.
Yeah. This is about collecting the sums in court from the, uh...
Owners?
Yeah, the landlords.
Owners of the illegal conversions.
The state, the state statute requires an ordinance.
Mr. President? Yes, sir. Councilman?
When these landlords create these illegal, unsafe parts, they're putting the lives and safety of those persons in danger, there should be something more than just collecting fees. There should be some criminal positive retribution, because it's just, you've had your death recently in the third world.
Well, that, those, I agree, if somebody dies and gets hurt, absolutely shouldn't go in.
Do we have ordinances?
Well, if somebody dies, I mean, that could be a criminal action, not under the municipal code.
Under the spirit of...
Yeah. To see.
Could we find out if, um, if there is such a... Maybe petition our state legislators to...
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, speaking of illegal conversions, I don't know who the fire prevention person is, it's Mark Chow that's retired, and Greg White retired, I don't know who the person is, but whoever he is, he needs to be beat for that, because we have so many illegal conversions. If you can rise to the city, and if you see green floor, air conditions in the attic, you know that's a legal conversion. No one's spinning, putting air conditions in the attic and running electric bills if they're not on liberty.
They're not collecting rent.
But, but squirrels, right?
Tony, can we, can we send a letter over to, um, to fire prevention?
Mm-hmm.
Let's see, I don't know if that's under their duties to...
Especially in the first, or the third war, excuse me, as Councilman King noted, that we have those big one-family homes, and you can just look, I can just ride down certain streets and look at, oh, so how do you always, any conditions go in the third floor? In the attic? So we can have someone be hooked back.
I know the health department used to have an inspector and a police department representative, Dennis Carvalho squad all the time, and Richie Higgins retired now, right? But those two? They would go out weekly, every Wednesday. I, I don't know, we need to follow up and see if they're still there.
It used to be a task force, but, you know, the police department, health department, housing, fire, I don't know who's in charge of that now.
I think it's even happening.
It's happening.
I think it's happening.
Thanks, Tony.
Tony, can we find out what happened to that task force?
Yeah, it does happen. I requested, it does happen.
But I know Vito's out now, I mean, there's a lot of guns gone, and the question is...
I requested, and they went out. It, it does happen.
Can we find out who the members of that, of that task force is? Because people have changed. So we, at least, the council members at least can know who to call if they need the task force to go out.
That'd be great.
Yeah, but Mr. President, as Councilman said, they need to be proactive, because if we get a complaint, it means, we got one complaint, there may be twenty other instances out there, and you're telltale signs, as the councilman says. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman?
Under which jurisdiction this task force belonged to?
It's a, it's a combination of, of like four, five...
Yeah, but who, who, let's say, if I might have somebody to go check to Mr. Zengala's apartment, who do I call?
Well, I used, I used to call, when I had, depending on what it was, I'd either call Vito, or I'd call Richie Higgins, the health...
You have to keep an eye on him.
My point is, if, if we can get the names of the five members or six members that are part of this, for all of us, then we know we can call one or the other, any one of those members we...
Yeah, you have to say, you see, we're chicken, but now he's retired, I mean...
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah, if we get the list of the five people, then we know who to call and what...
Okay. Very good. Fine, I'll figure it out soon as possible.
I see Reverend Darius has seen it on, maybe report a relocation officer, because they would have to relocate the person, people.
You should get it called in.
Yeah, so...
They find it, you haven't seen it called in. All right, so Tony, can we get that?
Letter dated July eighth, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here, too, for awarding of said properties in the amount of one thousand seventy dollars forty-three cents.
I have a concern here, though. Property that caught fire in Marshall Street, last week? Four forty-two, I think it was, Marshall Street? Was it just last night?
Yesterday.
That was an abandoned house. Abandoned house.
Four under block.
There's, I know we went through this whole process about getting the property owners to, that's not. Uh, if we could find out, we had an issue once with these abandoned houses, to have a name of who's the management company on the door.
Remember, we could...
Yes.
Home orders on that.
Right, has, has there been any follow-up with that, or if we can send inspectors out to check all the abandoned houses, make sure that they've complied with the name, the contact person of who we call when we have an abandoned house that needs to be boarded up or secured or grass cut? We, we had a whole ordinance on this. Some, some banks...
Four post corporate interests, they aren't good.
Some banks complied, because I remember when we were going door-to-door, there were notices, you know, "If you need anything, call this number and this company." But I have to believe, for example, this four forty-two, Marshall, they probably...
That's not...
Unfortunately, I'm not prepared.
Letter dated July twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Public Works, requesting that your honorable body adopt an ordinance for the purpose of vacating a portion of Brighton Street from Pulaski Street to Cold Place required for the construction of a new elementary school.
Mr. President, this is the first I see of this, can I put a hold on it so I can find out more about this?
Letter dated July twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against property listed on Schedule A attached here, too, for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred ninety dollars seventy-six cents. Letter dated July twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for his honor, the mayor, to execute the utility relocation agreement for relocation of certain sewer facilities in connection with the construction of Route twenty-seven N B at West Grand Street. Project will be funded by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Letter dated July thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to T and M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services on a time and material basis for actual time and expenses in connection with traffic signal design and construction inspection at the intersection of East Street and Windville Scott Plaza, and the intersection of Jackson Avenue and Monroe Avenue and Anus Street, at a cost not to exceed one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred fifty dollars for reimbursement. Letter dated August fourth, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here, too, for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars twenty-eight cents. Letter dated August fourth, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against property listed on Schedule A attached here, too, for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of eight thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars nineteen cents.
Tony, one thing that I forgot to mention last meeting, the city has property that we own. We were supposed to go out for auction on some of these properties, at least two years now. What, what's going on?
Uh, that'll be coming up, right up...
Uh, that'll be coming up, uh, right after the letter, right there.
Is it?
Yeah, we have, uh.
I know we foreclosed on a lot of properties, for tax reasons, maybe for cleanup, uh, liens, whatever, but, I mean, we gotta get these properties back on the market.
Yeah, we have, uh, a committee, and that's met a couple of times, and we're gearing up after the letter.
Could you, um, make sure that the council gets informed on what properties we're looking to deal with?
Yeah, well, we usually have the, uh, the auction board publish the, uh, the properties involved.
But before you publish it, we could know what the list is, please.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Letter dated June thirty, two thousand fourteen from the Police Director requesting to establish handicap parking spaces, uh, Fifth Ward, seven thirty-eighth Amburton.
Yeah, put it on.
Fifth Ward, ten oh-nine William Street.
Put it on.
Fourth Ward, forty-five Orchard Street.
Put it on.
Deletions, one fifty Jake Street, five oh-nine Broadway Avenue, five twelve South Park Street, nine thirty-four Anna Street, and one twenty-three Ackman Street. Okay, First Ward, one forty-six Franklin Street.
Hold.
First Ward, sixty-three Florida Street.
Hold.
First Ward, two twenty-nine Pop, Erie Street.
Hold.
Second Ward, nine fifty-two Grove Street.
Put it on.
First Ward, two fifty-two Fulton Street.
Hold.
First Ward, one forty-four South Park.
Hold.
Sixth Ward, eight fifty East Jersey Street.
Hold.
Fifth Ward, ten seventy-one Anna Street.
Uh, hold that.
Hold that. Okay. Second Ward, twenty Cedar Avenue.
Put it on.
First Ward, twenty-three Florida Street.
Hold.
Deletion, six twenty Greer Avenue, seventy Florida Street, seventy-six Florida Street, and twenty-eight Spencer. Letter dated August first, two thousand fourteen from the Police Director requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply acceptance sign all appropriate documents for the two thousand fourteen state body armor replacement fund program. Okay, uh, letter dated June twenty-seven, July ninth, and July seventeenth from the city treasurers submitting the treasury report, receipts and disbursements for the month of March, April, and May, and statement of bank balances and investments as of March thirty-first, April thirty, and May thirty-first. Also, you have the fair rental housing board minutes of May twenty-third, two thousand fourteen.
We didn't receive, Tony, this year, the, uh, not even this month, the, uh, list of expenses for the sewer. Got one from May, we didn't get one for June. June or July?
Yeah, there was one from May.
That was from Public Works?
He was emailing them all.
Never got, never got June or July for? You know, we agree that we're gonna get a list of all the expenses.
And they were gonna be in.
We started, uh, we started with the one in May, it was nice, but then.
That was it.
That was it?
Yeah.
So we're missing June and July, unless they didn't do any work, which is.
All right, we have to go into closed session.
We're expecting, we're going to, we're going to close session.
Okay, I gotta read my little cards, you know. Where, uh, the open public meetings, Act L nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss a matter falling within the attorney-client privilege. Minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved that the public being excluded from this meeting. Councilwoman Perkins-Augusti?
Aye.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Baumann?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
Just wanna remind everyone at home that on the September eleventh of, of two thousand fourteen, which is a Thursday morning, at eight forty-six a.m., we will be, uh, the city will be conducting their memorial service at the train station in front of the, uh, September eleventh monument. Sure, I have nothing else, I, Councilor, once you're around.
I'm just wondering, my colleagues, uh, August twenty-seventh, the city will be conducting its annual book back of school supply giveaway, so if you put it on your calendar, the program will receive more information, will probably be at, uh, locations in your neighborhood.
Councilman Torres?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. President, can we reach out to, uh, Congressmen Siriess, Senator Bob Menendez, and Cory Booker? I know in the past, uh, we tried to stop the commercial vehicles from going up, uh, First Street. And then now we have a new school, School Twenty-Eight, uh, I believe they did a, uh, a test to see how much pollution's in the air, we have a daycare center, we have a community center down there now, so I think, uh, can we set up a meeting or some type of letter, see if they can sit, come and sit down with us so that we could, uh, eliminate that traffic of, of commercial vehicles?
Hold on, can we send a letter out to those three gentlemen? And, um, maybe coordinate a meeting, uh, even right down there on First Street.
So they can experience, it won't be experienced.
Councilman Reyes?
Yes.
It's a federal, the last time we were denied was because it was a federal interstate congressional issue, so I think we need to get a federal.
Okay. And can we, can we also reach out to the Board of Ed, the principals in the First Ward, School Twenty-Eight, School One, School Eight, School Thirteen? I would like to, uh, come up with something where kids can get, uh, community service, and we could go around the First Ward, and maybe eventually to the whole city, and working together to, to, to clean up the city, because lately I've been noticing, you know, even though Public Works does, does a great job, our, our city's dirty. So, uh, I would like to try to collaborate with the Board of Ed and see if we could give the kids some college, uh, some community service and, uh, start cleaning up the city.
Do you like the big recycle, uh?
Correct.
Education type thing?
Absolutely. We could reward them at the end with some type of medals or plaques or whatever, uh.
Do you got all the schools, come on?
You said twenty-eight, well, which ones, in, just in the first?
And if, I wanna start on the first, and if it's successful, then maybe we can go on to the second, or, or, South Street, twenty-eight, and then the one.
And, and one, eight.
And thirteen.
And thirteen.
Uh, also, Mr. President, uh, I got a complaint from, uh, several teachers I met over the summer, uh, about there's no signage on Broadway. Uh, Broadway, right in front of School One, the area where buses come in and, uh, you have handicap, uh, students who are, uh, are able to get on and off the bus, and, and there's always parents parked there, so the, the yellow line is faded, there's no signs there, I'd like to maybe we could reach out to the Petti and, uh, get some signs up there and, uh, paint it out. And last but not least, Mr. President, I don't know if any, if city council's aware, but the Eport and North End Little League Baseball team, a couple of weeks ago, uh, won the fourteen-and-under district for the state of New Jersey. This is the farthest they ever been, uh, they played a team down from Tom's River in Berkeley Township, if they would've won that game, they would've been eligible for the Little League World Series. So, uh, they came up short, but I would like to acknowledge them, Yolanda, I'll give you the names, uh, later, but I just, I think they did a great, uh, a great, a great job by the way.
You're gonna have it come up?
Yes, we're gonna have it come up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman, pass.
Councilman Coleman?
Yeah, I think it was President, I got a couple things, President. Uh, make note of this, I, I thought I would have the flyer tonight, but I don't have it. On, on this twenty-fourth, I'm going to have a gospel explosion, uh, right at the, uh, Praze along Plaza, which is Hollow Playground, starting from about three to seven. There's gonna be a combination of multicultural choirs from various churches, uh, we're gonna render a couple of songs each from each choir, uh, have, uh, made preparation to, uh, various churches, they have, uh, agreed to do it, and some, also, we'll do some, uh, quartets, uh, I'm looking forward to it, uh, people are be, uh, excited about it, uh, and, uh, you're all welcome, free of charge, of course, uh, and, uh, look for a great time, it's on a Sunday afternoon, uh, and, uh, be there. I'm probably going to, probably going to give out some special VIP passes for, uh, parking, uh, we have it set up, so I'll get that to you guys as quick as I can, I thought I was gonna have that here for you, but I don't have that. But all the others, all the, all the other entities are in place.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
August twenty-fourth and three to seven.
There's a Sunday, right?
Very soon.
At Praze along Plaza, at Hollow Playground, right? Uh, yes, you are, uh, the, uh, like I said, gonna be a multicultural event, but I mean, naturally, I don't take it, but we're getting, Spanish is gonna be singing, African-American be singing, I'm trying to reach out to Portuguese, got, uh, group there, soon to have a meeting with them, lock them in, place them, like, uh, tasks will be completed, uh, so, Mayor's on board, and, uh, a lot of people, a lot of other people's already on board, so looking forward to that. Another thing is, uh, Yolanda, and, and, uh, I received several calls about this, we passed orders some time ago, about no construction be held on a Sunday or legal holiday, would you please, I asked Grace to pull those order, that order out, would you please send a letter over to the Police Director and the Police Chief, uh, making sure that they advise that, 'cause a lot of, uh, the Deputy Chief does not, uh, know about it, and not have been made aware, or maybe did, maybe they've forgotten, but I need to just alert them again, that there's, uh, there's an ordinance in place, that no construction be held on a Sunday or legal holiday. And last but not least, Mr. President, also, like, for you, send a letter, uh, Yolanda sent an order to Police Director and the Police Chief, about the bodegas, that we passed orders some time ago on this, but we close at ten p.m. Uh, the summer is naturally just about over, but that is awful, uh, especially, I'm gonna talk about, by the way, I, I don't, if the other council wants to make sure that it's being a hit to, then I think they should, uh, make sure that it's, it's done, but I definitely want it done in the fifth one, uh, that those bodegas that have been causing problem, uh, especially Sister Lance on Anna and, and Jackson Avenue, has to close at ten o'clock. On Florrie and Catherine Street, has to close at, at twelve, ten o'clock. On Johnson Avenue, there's a bodega there, has to be closed at.
Council, can you get the actual addresses?
I'll get those, uh, right.
So she can put them in the letter?
I'll get those, but, but main thing is, send those orders to them.
To them.
And make sure that they have made aware of it so that they'll have them in the, uh, in the, uh, at the front desk, so they won't say, well, I don't know anything about, you know, what did they, I received several calls, especially about the, uh, well, all of them really, uh, it's very important to people trying to rest at night, uh, I know Councilman Mazza was talking about loud music, uh, a week ago, uh, and, and we had orders in place, but they have to be enforced, uh, and that's, I think that's one of the biggest challenges here, that they be enforced, so, thank you, Mr. President.
I'm just gonna add one more ordinance to be, make sure we make a copy, get it over to this department. Uh, we passed an ordinance in this council a few years ago that said that, uh, these scrappers can't be pushing carts with it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's all over the place.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, I think our police department needs to, uh, send a copy of that ordinance to the Patrol Division, if they see those guys out there pushing those carts, uh, they should issue the summons, um, and more importantly than the summons is, stuff should be confiscated from them, and, uh, Public Works is, uh, more than willing to come out and, and grab the cart or whatever, and bring it back to, uh, U.P.W.
Yolanda.
Because, uh, what's happening is, uh, and I noticed it down, uh, South First Street, and over on York Street now, they got a recycling place there, um, and, in addition to the police department, uh, pulling these guys off the street that are pushing shopping carts, I think there has to be an effort, and Tony, maybe you can get, uh, our licensing to go out there, uh, to these scrap yards, they're not supposed to be allowing, or even collecting this stuff without, uh, a driver's license, an I.D., you know, it just, guys just can't walk up to a scrapyard with a bag full of stuff and say, here, give me five dollars, and they're not supposed to be, uh, doing this, uh, we, we created ordinances and I don't think, uh, we're enforcing them, like the councilman said, so.
Mr. President, just wanted to add, I know we have spoken in the past about individuals that go through the garbage, the recycling items as well, and that, I mean, so many times you put something out there and within minutes, it's like, gone.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't think that that's even enforced, too, like, police officers might see that, and, um, but that's a concern, too.
But I think those, uh, those ordinances have to be brought up to their attention. I know there's been a whole shift in hierarchy in a police department, new sergeants, new lieutenants, they need to know about the ordinances that were passed in the city council last.
Can I be aware of you? I'll provide this thing, I have a duty to bear.
Councilman Galanios?
Thank you.
Councilman Mazza?
Yeah, Mr. President, on the same subject, uh, but before we, I get to that, I'd like to congratulate my good friend over here on the left, can we mention his name? Yeah, Francisco. What a great job for Joe LaBrassius' event, it was something that was very nice, very exciting, and everybody talked about it. Thank you very much, you and especially, uh, other fan, uh.
John already.
John already, of course, yeah. And all the administration, uh, make of something very memorable, and it brought up a lot of good feeling in the area, so, good job, Francisco. Uh, Mr. President, scavengers is a problem in Elizabeth, that Councilman mentioned, everybody's mentioned, but nothing is actually, it's happening. Even if we have an old lady, there's been creation, creating, uh, many jobs, left and right, everybody gets appointed that position, that position, that position, and I asked her several times, and I was told that because of the budget, we have no money, but me, what, people are keeping getting, hiring in different positions, which is okay, you know, economy's getting up there, which is nice. Can we hire somebody to go after those scavengers, or the company that we pay thirty-two, thirty-two or thirty-six million dollars, could they provide somebody with a Jeep, either to go up and down and say, put somebody in a six-ward, some in a, in a four, some in every ward, one person for every ward? At the end, the city will make up on the revenue, because they go through the garbage, all the garbage falls into the street, it flies into the streets, they pick up the metal, the plastic is all over the place, and if you say something, guess, guess what kind of words you're gonna get? Hallelujah, we forgive that. Six p.m., we have to enforce the law, six p.m., garbage should not be going out, not early than six p.m. And there we are, twelve o'clock, boom, garbage goes out, now you smell, no offense to fish, but, I personally, if I go to a restaurant, I enjoy it, but when you put a garbage out, you know, if it's not in a container and you put it up, you know, I feel like calling the ambulance, taking me to the hospital, because it's really, it's not acceptable, so, if they put a seven o'clock at night, or eight o'clock, or ten o'clock before you turn the TV off, go, what, so I pick up a garbage and bring him out of the site, well, that would be okay, but at twelve o'clock, whatever. Landlords, those landlords, and I hope rent control will start working on, there's a lot of landlords, they don't do their job, uh, they don't provide the garbage can for the recycle, they don't provide the garbage go covers, and I have to say, thank you, Fibo, Fibo did a great job on a couple of locations, he went back, I called him up again, I showed him some pictures, see, my phone is very small?
But it takes pictures.
Taking pictures. And I have to say, Fibo did a super job by calling some landlord, warning them, and then bringing them to court. We need more people doing the job that Fibo, I think you were mentioning, by creating a job, or fill out the job of, rest in peace.
Aldo.
Aldo, and I'm sure that they stayed and do, I don't know what they're waiting for, we need to have that person to come back on board, because money's already in the budget, I don't know whether we're saving for somebody else in a new year, I don't know, but we need to have somebody.
Maybe four of them, that's my opinion, we should do, because we started that with one or two.
Right.
And, and they've produced more money in revenue than three times their salary.
And enough for anything, I don't wanna be called rat, I'm doing my job as a councilman, because when I do that, and that's what I told the people today, and I think good job to the six-word councilman, that's, uh, somebody else, we are the voice, we are the ears, and we are the eyes of our community, and if we don't report to the police, we are the one to do that, we're getting paid to do our job, and if I say to the landlord, I say, listen, garbage is not supposed to go out, or whatever, and I show him the copy of the law, put it in a mailbox, so they got the copy and everything else, and then you go and knock on the door, and I say, listen, you know, this is the third time, you're still doing, I say, faculty's. third time, you're still doing, I say, if I call this spec, you're gonna be getting a ticket. And you're gonna go, well, you're a rat?
So you're trying to prevent rats.
But anyway, that's, we do have the people and manpower, I think if we don't work during the summer, uh, you know, to make sure that the, you know, the recycle man is doing a good job, but the landlord, if they're another manager, rent control requires, if I don't remember, we approve it every year, but we have, uh, you know, somebody's gotta have a record. If all those landlord, they post rental for every individual tenant, how much they pay because I see people in and out, when people go in and out, that means the renter is going above and beyond what the firm market is. And I hear some people for two room, they pay sixteen hundred dollar in Elizabeth. Come on, this is not Hollywood where people's got money to throw away, go to casino. We're still a working class, it might be with twelve percent unemployment in Elizabeth or more. So something needs to be done to wake up those people that are in charge over the building, with the rent control that, you know, that they go after the landlord, they don't doing their job, and there's a lot of them, including, I don't know, mentioned before about those head condition in the attic or below in a basement, there's a lot of revenue to be generated to the city, and at the same time, we could put them into shape and we could save life because let them out, it would be another fire. And now it's all, we're full sorry, we go to mass, we go to funeral, what good is it? Meanwhile, we are the city's partner, we have to make sure that this law gets enforced. And I really appreciate it, everybody, we work together as a team and we work for a betterment of our city. I'm finished, Manny.
Counselor, questions?
Yes, Mr. President, very briefly, I just wanna thank you and members of City Council for your support on the street naming celebration on July twenty-seventh. In my opinion, it was a great success because government and the community came together. And when that happens, you get great results. So, so that's the main reason. The second thing, I wanna specifically thank Councilwoman and, and Councilman Mazzola for being there, as well as you, Mr. President, and enjoying that celebration. Uh, the second thing, on September seventh, uh, we are planning to hold our, our second Ciclovia, for those of you who forgot, I mean, that basically means open streets. Uh, I have asked Councilman Torres to join me in organizing this event. Uh, we're hoping to, to hold this event in Ellisport, uh, because it would be easier at this point to do it there, fewer cars and, you know, a bigger, bigger area for, for the kids and anyone who participates. And also we have the soccer field that hopefully we, we can use that day. So later on, we'll give more information, because I really would like this one to be a lot bigger than the first one we did two years ago. And for those who are watching out there, I just wanna remind you, Bronx Street, that the first Ciclovia was held in Elizabeth, not in East Bronx Street, as they advertised recently. It was held here, in Elizabeth, New Jersey.
We're serving.
It's gonna be, the Ciclovia's gonna be nine to eleven-thirty. So it shouldn't really interfere too much with church, that's one of the things we're trying to avoid, so.
You are welcome. It's a seven-thirty service, a nine-thirty service, and eleven-thirty.
That's it, Counselor. Thank you.
I have two things. Uh, one, um, in the past and a few months ago, I had requested for a four-way stop sign in the corner of Virginia and Sheridan. And I've been following up with the traffic department, trying to get traction, but it seems like no one wants.
What's the intersection?
Um, Sheridan.
I just received some memos from, I believe it was Lieutenant Marcus, late this afternoon.
Late, concerning that as well?
Concerning different, uh, street issues.
Okay, so is he officially back now?
I don't know.
Because I know, like, the attempts I've made to talk, I know he was away, um, in Virginia. It's just such a dangerous intersection, it's a residential area, city streets, and I know it's been held up mainly because there, there has, you know, Lieutenant Marcus.
We're gonna put it on for.
Okay, thank you.
Because we went through this a year ago, they just get lost somewhere, and the City Council, as a, as a governing body, we can act upon, create the ordinance or the resolution to, to create that four-way stop sign. And then, you know what, let them scuffle to get it, to give us an answer, because beyond, you waited a year and a half.
Yeah.
Because they had to send it down to the state?
No, not anymore.
Oh, they don't, oh, okay.
We hired an engineering company to, to, to not have to do that, as long as the, the city, the streets are within city.
Not within city streets.
It's not surrounded by any state highways.
Thank you, Mr. President. My second item, it's definitely, of course, more complicated, and it has to have a traffic study because it's on the, um, state, uh, state road. Um, in the corner of Waverly and Newark Avenue, right across from Foreman Mills. Um, a big situation that's happening there is that a lot of people from the community, um, they cross the street there to go to Foreman Mills and the, and the stores that are there, and also the church that's there in the corner, Camp Jehovah's, a really big church. Um, so you literally have hundreds of people during the week that attempt to cross the street there, and there's been, I know there's been people hit, a lot of near misses, and especially at nighttime, forget about it. It's, um, and I know the church, they also did a petition to see if there's a way that there could be a traffic light. Um, I spoke. Oh, well, they, they sent it to me personally, yeah, if anything, I'll bring a copy for all of you to have it too. Uh, they recently just gave it to me. But also, um, tonight I spoke with Assemblyman, Assemblywoman Nekiyano, and she brought it up too, that she's concerned about it. And I know it's a little complex, um, she mentioned.
Newark Avenue is a state avenue, San Bro.
So she said that the city would have to pay twenty-five percent of the traffic light, um, but they would cover the rest, uh, the rest, yeah, to the state.
Okay. Place the, um, traffic light right there at Fairmont, and then what's the next traffic light?
Well, there's. Not until North Avenue?
No, it's not.
No, 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 there's one in front of the, uh, the arch building.
There's, there's one in front of Walgreens?
No.
And there's one in front of, um.
Family Tree.
Cause, well, by, yeah, by the family cafe.
Cause I know that one all the time, so it's just, it's just one block.
Yeah.
Can they put one of those, um, pedestrians walkway that are on the line?
Well, that's what I, I think, I think the.
That's, that's true.
I think that what we need to do is, um.
Cause I'm down with that position.
Yeah, it's too short.
It's too short, yeah.
Have traffic conduct, maybe we could get T and M involved, um, to give us an idea of what they suggest.
Okay.
They're engineers, so.
It has to be a walkway, because it's too close for the other light.
We did that on, um, we did that in front of the Liberty Square Senior Building, we created an actual walkway with those signs that say stop for pedestrian.
Yeah, that would be great. And, and anything to, to assist that.
I, I speak there, to there, so I know exactly where you come from.
So my, my major thing is, how you, you said, Mr. President, just do a study, whatever is best for it. Um, but that's, that's been something that's been held up because of the lack of leadership in that area.
That's, um, like caution, you know, with those things, just, that that's it, yeah.
Thank you.
Let T and M investigate it and, uh, and give us a, give us a recommendation, what they feel would be the best way to let, so to protect the pedestrians.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor, you're the most.
Yeah, Mr. President, thank you. Uh, I have a couple of things, a couple of things for traffic to look for me. Uh, we created two thousand eight, a, a no parking zone, and relocated Bayway from one-on-nine to one-nineteen Bayway Avenue. Like for them to look at that on a certain day, certain hours. Uh, we don't need that anymore there, I wanna see if they take a look at it so we can rescind that. Uh, seven-forty Ledgerwood Avenue, we created an ordinance there.
You gotta slow it down.
Uh, seven-forty Ledgerwood Avenue.
Okay.
We created a loading zone, it's never been implemented, never been striped, never been used. I want them to look at it and see, like, make a recommendation so we can rescind it if it's, we've never actually used it. Uh, I have a request, three-twenty-six Loomis Street, a handicap, uh, the person that requested it may no longer be there. Uh, like for them to look into that handicap. Also, wanted to find out if we still have any programs for prisoner reentry, the initiatives we used to have, or resources, people that come out of jail that are looking for jobs, I don't know if we still have anything. I know we had a grant before, but I don't know.
You can check that with the EDC in the first ward, in first.
Yeah, EDC.
That's the most recent.
Yes, I had someone inquire about that, and I didn't know if anything existed anymore. Okay, good.
T and R would be the contact person.
Okay, I did refer them to EDC and retail skills, that sort of thing, but I wasn't sure there was anything specific geared towards prisoner reentry.
Retail skills, not that.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry, I gave them that already. Oh, I wanted to, and I know this has been brought up particularly by my colleague, colleague, Councilman Goman in the fifth ward, it has to do with speed hubs. Uh, we've talked about this and gone over this many times, I know we've tried to pilot or whatever, but I also know that now Newark has implemented in, it in their neighborhoods. They've put the speed hubs in, they've been doing it. Uh, I wanna see if we would maybe contact Newark to see how it's going for them, that since they have them in their neighborhoods, and see if maybe we can do something and implement them here. Uh, I know on my street, again, people cut through there to go to Linden, to cut down to Broadway Avenue, ambulances, school buses, and all kind of vehicles, and the neighbors are just very concerned, and there's not else, much else that we can do. Uh, so I wanna see, since Newark is doing it, maybe we can talk with them and find out how's it going for them, since they've been doing it, how it's impacting their machines, their street cleaners and everything else, because they're doing. And see if maybe we can.
Send a letter out to their Director of DPW, I guess.
Mr. President, I'm gonna interrupt you just a second.
Yeah.
I thought, I, I explained to the guy before, it does work. I did a, a complete analysis, not only here in the state of New Jersey, I told you, I followed this all the way down to South Carolina, North Carolina, matter of fact, North Carolina. And it works.
I know they haven't done, what they have done in Wildwood Crest is the roller ones?
No, no, it's, it's not rolling.
But that's the one they have down there.
Right, but this is what he described as speed hubs, and they work. And trust me, I wouldn't recommend it if I knew it was gonna destroy equipment, because I'm crazy about equipment. I, we got brand-new sweepers, street sweepers, and, and they're doing a fantastic job, so why would I recommend something that's gonna destroy, you know, something that we, we want and we love? So it worked, it, it weren't causing damage to, in it, snow plows, you know, I watched the guys plow snow a few years ago, before I put it to the table. But anyway, we, we just need to.
Let's get a, let's get a, um, a letter out to the DPW Director in Newark, and, uh, let's see what he says, and then we'll have to maybe bring, uh, bring Director into one of our meetings and try.
I think you need to do that because, I, that's your stomach right there, okay?
I know that.
It actually slows down the traffic.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It, it works.
It works.
Cause if not, you rip up your car.
You know, we're talking about earlier about quality of life issues, and sending the ordinance to the police department so they could enforce it, and this is, this is a big issue that we have here in the city. Uh, the last thing I have, Mr. President, is regarding our master plan here for the city. We've talked about that it was gonna be updated, uh, just was wondering what the status of that was, or if amendments are gonna be made to it, because I have some things I'm interested in the second ward and looking at, uh, and would like to find out where we are with that.
Can we send a letter to, uh, to our business administrator? My understanding is that our city planner has made a proposal to update our master plan to her. And it hasn't come down yet. Um, and if it's a, if it's a money thing, maybe, um, we could do it by pieces, so it's not a, a big expense in one shot. So I know there's members of council who have, uh, pocket areas that need to be rezoned. And, uh, maybe we could, like a good piecemeal as opposed to redoing a whole master plan, maybe we could pick, you know, uh, entertain five or six or seven pocket areas throughout the city, just to, uh, an amendment to the master plan. See what kind of cost involved in that.
I just wanna say, I thought it was a great turnout to the National Night Out, the Council did a, did a great job and everybody participating, so it was, uh, it was very good. I know we've been doing a lot of things here, many of us here in the summer, I know Councilman Goman had a great cookout this year, it was fantastic. And I wanna congratulate Councilman Torres for being champs here in the city, uh, the baseball champs, softball, I'm sorry, softball champs, that's right.
You want to play softball too.
You know, and as my colleague indicated, Councilman Questa with the Joe Long thing, unfortunately I was not here, couldn't attend, otherwise I would have loved to have been there. There are a lot of, a lot of great positive things about that, and, uh, great things for the city, very common, so.
I, I just wanna piggyback on that, you know, I'm, I'm not a big fan of social media, um, because I think there's negatives and positives, but the positives that, that have come out of all the stuff that you guys have been doing throughout the city is great because we just don't get the newspaper coverage and the media coverage and everything else that, that we should get for all the positive things that we do. And I think the social media, if nothing else, it's allowing for all of the individual ward and council positive stuff that's going on to be, to go virals literally, and, and I congratulate all of you for that, because all the positive stuff that we do is, is hopefully, uh, starting to outweigh the negative.
Absolutely.
And I'm glad that that.
I agree.
That Facebooks and all that stuff is, is at least getting that out to the public. And the one thing I will tell the public at home is that we do have a City of Elizabeth website, uh, which has a calendar of events, and if you got no plans for a specific week or weekend, look on that calendar of events, we've got a lot of stuff going on in this city of Elizabeth every week.